I'd like to call this meeting of the Westland City Council to order, please. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight led by Anila Anderson, a student from Roosevelt McGrath Elementary.
My name is Councilwoman Tasha Green and I'm here tonight with Anila Anderson. Anila is a second grader and she is in Mrs. Hoover's class at Roosevelt McGrath School. She's seven years old. Anila likes to play cooking games, dance, and do gymnastics. Wow. She said April is her friend and unfortunately April could not be here tonight, so we'll have to get April in at a later date. But April is a classmate of Anila's and April likes her to do hip-hop dances and gymnastics. Feel like doing a little dancing tonight? Not tonight, okay. All right. When Anila grows up, she wants to own a restaurant and sing. Her mom will be in charge of the restaurant when she goes off to sing. All right, putting mom to work, I know that's right. All right, is there anything you'd like to say tonight, Anila? Well, thank you so much for doing the pledge and we have Anila's parents here. If you'd like to come up, any parents or family would like to come up tonight? And is there any faculty or administration here from Roosevelt McGrath who'd like to say some words on behalf of Anila tonight?
I will.
Wonderful. Hi.
Hi. Thank you. I'm Mary Morabito and I'm the principal at Roosevelt McGrath. And we chose Anila to lead in the pledge today because she's such a great leader in our school. You always see her doing the right thing and she's friendly and we just love having her there. Thank you, Anila. And she has a great family. We do have another staff member here, it's Mrs. Leto. She can just stand up, she's a third grade teacher at our school. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Any parents or family would like to join us? Oh, you can stay for the picture. Just really quick, any family would like to join us for a picture?
Yes, all of them.
And Anila, since you did a really great job, we're gonna give you a certificate tonight. So here's our certificate for you. And if you want to hold it up in front of you, that nice fan there, he's gonna take a really quick picture of us. But before we do, would mom or dad like to say anything?
Very proud of my baby tonight. This is her first public appearance. I knew she could do it and I'm very happy that she was able to go ahead and get through it.
Very proud of you, baby.
Well, you can come back anytime. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Green.
Present.
Councilman Hurd.
Here.
Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Londo.
Here.
President Godbell.
Present.
A quorum is present.
We'll begin with announcements and presentations. Mayor?
If I could get Council President and City Clerk LeBlanc to join me as well. I'd also like to ask our Animal Control Officer, Bren Doring, to step forward. We're gonna recognize one of our animal control officers tonight based on a recommendation of one of our citizens and that citizen is Casey Joyce. Is Casey Joyce here tonight? Casey, you gotta step forward here, too. I'm glad you're here because would you like to tell the reason why we should be making this recognition tonight, yourself? In your own words? I think it'd be much better than if I re-dream, if you actually say it tonight, so, please.
Sorry, I'm nervous. So, we have a big German Shepherd and he, it was like, what was it? Tuesday or Wednesday and it was super windy and he got out and Bren, like, someone got our dog and she just, she helped talk, you know, told him to do the right thing and, sorry, I'm super nervous. Never done this. And he wasn't gonna return the dog. He actually told me, like, he's always wanted a German Shepherd and he lied where he found our dog. So, and that was my biggest fear, is like, our dog getting into the wrong hands and without Bren, seriously, I'm such a nervous wreck. Like, I would've rather, you know, the email, but... It's okay, but I can't thank her enough. We honestly wouldn't have gotten our dog back if it wasn't for Bren because he, like, I just said, he didn't want to give him back. He was even planning to get him groomed, like, the next day. It's crazy. So, thank you.
So, thank you. One of the things that the City of Westland is working very hard to do is become a compassionate city. And so what we do is we ask our residents to help us recognize people that deserve recognition for going above and beyond the call of duty. And it just happened, in this case, it was one of our very own animal control officer, Bren Doring. So, the one thing is that City Council knows this, is that we actually get a lot of emails like this about the work that you do. So, Westland is a very pet-friendly city and we're only as good as the people that work for us and you do above and beyond on a day-to-day basis, so we wanted to take a couple minutes to recognize you here tonight. And before I hand you the, we have a Compassionate City Award tonight for you on behalf of the City of Westland and it's signed by myself and the City Council President on behalf of all the City Council and the City Clerk as well. So, we'd like to just give you maybe a few minutes to say a few words.
Well, thank you very much. I'm very honored to receive this. Animals are my passion, just like with most people, and I take the welfare and their lives very seriously. And I work with a great amount of people and residents. They know that I'm always hunting for dog houses, unused dog houses, unwanted food, dog beds, because there's a lot of dogs in need and sometimes people financially aren't able to help their animal. They love their animal, but they maybe can't protect them from the flies, like, that'll be coming up right now, you know? So, I have a great resource of a lot of great residents that know that I'll go above and beyond, I'll do what I need to do to help the welfare of the animals and that's, I'm very blessed to have this position and I take it very passionately and I am grateful for this honor. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Bren. For those of you that don't know, Bren works through the Department of Neighborhood Services. So, Joyce there, thank you for bringing this to our attention tonight. And Bren Doring, on behalf of the City of Westland, thank you for demonstrating the qualities, attributes, and willingness to go above and beyond to help those within our community. You represent the true definition of compassionate, of compassion. Thank you very much. Keep up the good work. All right, gentlemen, don't go away, we have one more tonight. Camry Clegg? So, Camry, on behalf of the City of Westland, we have a special recognition for you. You're very talented in a lot of different ways. So, tonight we have a resolution on behalf of the City of Westland to you. We were asked by somebody to recognize you for your accomplishments this past year, not only in academics but in sports. We're gonna start off with your academics and you are a member of the Wayne Memorial, the varsity girls' basketball team, right? All right, you guys had a pretty good year this year, didn't ya?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, first of all, academics, because that's the most important thing. Camry's grade point average is 4.5. She scored a 1,200 on the SAT. She's a dual-enrolled student taking college courses at Schoolcraft College. She's a three-year member of the National Honor Society. She's a three-year academic letter award winner. And she's also a student athlete who's going to be attending Clemson University in the fall. It's the ACC. Which is, this is the part I have a hard time with saying this, it's arguably the best conference in women's college basket... It's obviously a dream come true for you and, but before you came to Wayne Memorial, and she lives in Westland, but she went to school somewhere else. She attended Detroit Country Day and she moved back to Wayne Memorial. And I've already told you how great she is at academics. The girls' basketball team at Wayne Memorial, the season before Camry came back, was 0-21. So, I'm gonna let you take it from there. What happened after you came back?
I mean, we just pretty much turned the whole program around. I can't thank my coach Jarvis enough for giving me the opportunity to come back to my hometown school and turn the whole program around and now we're going on to new heights and it's just gonna get better and better.
Is your coach here tonight?
Um, I don't think so. I think he's at practice.
That's where he should be and that's where you should be, too, so. All right, so, but on behalf of the City of Westland, we'd like to honor folks that are going above and beyond and you are a great representation of our community with your strong academics and your leadership and what you're doing on the athletic court as well. So, when you go off to Clemson, make sure that they know you're from the all-American city, all right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Actually, I'm gonna pass down and let these guys say a couple words, too, as well, because they also have, I have a recognition for you on behalf of the City of Westland, but the Council President also has one on behalf of the Council for you.
Well, you've heard a lot about her academics and from the sports side of things, she's an all-state athlete. She was, I just saw in the Free Press last week, she was named as one of the premier across the state, one of the top five in the state for her accomplishments in basketball. And she did, she's very modest about her involvement in turning the team around, but it's pretty clear that her coming back to Wayne Memorial was a big impetus for the change that occurred in that program. And hopefully will continue on once she graduates and with Wayne Memorial. So, on behalf of City Council, I'd like to present you with this certificate of recognition on behalf of the Council and our City Clerk's office. Richard?
I just wish to say one thing. I never met you before tonight, but when you walked up here, you have some presence. There is no doubt about who's in charge in getting it done. Congratulations.
All right, once again, thank you and we're so proud of you and we wish you the best of luck, so stay in touch with us, all right? All right, one more shout-out for the Zebras, the Wayne Memorial Zebras?
Go Zebras!
Next up, we have the Wayne Westland Distinguished Young Women Scholarship winners. There's a number of winners and there's one special winner for Westland and one special winner for Wayne, so if everybody can come up and I'll introduce Jody Berry.
I'm gonna bring up my co-director, Lauren Reed. I'm sorry, she just got married, so. And I'm gonna let Lauren say a few words about the program and then we'll introduce her girls.
Well, we just wanna say thank you so much for all of you being able to be here tonight and recognize these beautiful women in front of us. I guess I'll move this way. The Wayne Westland Distinguished Young Women Program, formerly the Junior Miss Program, has been around in these two cities for the last 51 years, which is huge. We are the longest-running local program in the Distinguished Young Women Program across the state, I should say. So, we're very, very proud of these girls. They just recently competed just last month. We had an incredible time working with them for the last few months, learning more about them and exposing them to the program that we all hold very dear to our hearts. This program is for high school junior, young women. It is to help in supporting them for the next step in their careers, which of course is college, next step is college. And it's to see and find the ways in which we can provide them with any scholastic opportunity that we can afford. And this year, we gave away almost $9,000 to these young women to be able to take that next step on their journey. So, very proud of them, can't wait to recognize them this evening. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Lauren. And I just wanna do one little shout-out that if you know anyone, family member, neighbor, girl that babysits your children, that's going to be a high school junior, please encourage them to do this program next year. We start in January and we will, we're on distinguished, uw.org is our website, so. Okay, without further ado, I guess, ladies, would you kind of come up here and line up? We're gonna call you by name to get your certificates. Okay, Lauren mentioned that we gave away almost $9,000. Not only do we have some overall winners of the program, but they're all winners and they also get individual scholarships in various categories. So, first off is Nia Phillips. Nia goes to John Glenn and she also won, not only a participant of the program, but she also won an interview scholarship, self-expression, and fitness. Okay, next up, we have a few people that weren't able to come tonight because they have other commitments through school and whatnot, so I'm just gonna mention their names, but they will not be coming up. So Jade Elder was a participant and she also won a self-expression scholarship. Alana Brodnax, who's a teammate of Ms. Cle, so she is at practice, she was also a participant in the program. All right, Omo Wumi Ayangbay. Omo Wumi goes to John Glenn and she was a participant and she also won a self-expression scholarship. Shamaya Carter, Shamaya goes to Wayne Memorial and she was a participant and she also won the interview, an interview scholarship. Kayla Miles, Kayla could not be here tonight, she had a commitment, she attends John Glenn, but we are very proud of her as she won a scholastic scholarship. Cheyenne Heron. Cheyenne goes to John Glenn, she won a participant award, also talent and fitness scholarships. Astu Daya, Astu is not here tonight, she had a commitment through her family, but Astu was a participant in the program. Michelle Farrell. Michelle goes to John Glenn, she won, as well as a participant, she also won a talent scholarship and she was the Spirit Award winner, embodying the program, so. Kiara Stewart, Kiara could not be here today, but she attends John Glenn and she was a participant in the program for a scholarship as well. Okay, our Distinguished Young Women of Westland for 2019, so 2000, from now through 2019 at this time next year. Ms. Leah Kennedy. Leah attends John Glenn, she won the participant award, she also was a self-expression winner and a talent scholarship winner. Fatima Herrera, she is our Distinguished Young Woman of Wayne. She attends Wayne Memorial, she was a participant, she won the scholarship, I'm sorry, scholastics scholarship and interview scholarship. And lastly, our Distinguished Young Woman of Wayne and Westland is Ms. Alana Rudd. Alana's the overall winner of the program, but she attends John Glenn, she won additional scholarships in scholastics, interview, talent, self-expression, and fitness. So, big round of applause for all of these amazing women. I would just like to take team, one other comment on this. We heard about their wonderful academics in the presentation with Ms. Cle and these young ladies as well are embodying what the high schools in Wayne and Westland are accomplishing with these young women and we should all be proud of that, so, congratulations.
Yeah, I just wanna also congratulate all the winners. There's a lot of competing that goes on, they put a lot of effort into making it this far, so congratulations.
Once again, let's give them a big round of applause, congratulations.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Westland residents. I'm Mayor Walker from the City of Garden City. And we have an opioid epidemic that's throughout the United States and it's prevalent in Wayne County. We're losing young people every day in Wayne County. And I'm hosting an epidemic seminar, opioid epidemic seminar, called Chasing the Dragon. It's a film that was made by the FBI, the DEA, and we're gonna show the film, the FBI's gonna be there, the DDA and the United States Attorney's Office. And after the film, they're gonna have testimonials. We wanna educate the communities and the communities around us. This will be on Thursday night, April 26th, at 6:00 PM at the O'Leary Auditorium, that's at the Garden City High School on Middlebelt, between Ford and Warren. The O'Leary Auditorium, 6,500 Middlebelt. That auditorium seats several hundred people, so I've been over to Dearborn Heights, Inkster, Garden City, and now Westland, so we're inviting the communities around us to, if we can save one life, it's worth it. So, I encourage you to come out, parents, especially if you have teenagers. It is not recommended for small elementary children. There is some strong language in the film and the FBI told me to remind people not to bring the elementary students. But we need to get educated on this and, like I said, if we save one life, it's worth it. So, hope to see you there. Thank you for allowing me a couple minutes, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Good evening, Councilman Godbell, the entire Council, Mayor, all the dignitaries here and the fine citizens of Westland. I'm Mary McLendon from the Office of Wayne County Commissioner, Glenn Anderson, and it's always a pleasure to be in the fine city of Westland. I do want to remind you of the coffee hours. There was one last week and I'm sure some of the citizens that are here present today that were there at the coffee hour, but the next one will be the second Monday of every month, that's when it is. And the one in Westland is at the Big Boys and it begins at 9:00 AM. Again, that's the second Monday of every month. Also, we also know that we can call for the potholes, okay, that you see in your area. Again, you don't have to call because Wayne County's not out. They are out and they are patching those roads, but you may know of one in particular where you live that needs to be reported. That's the Wayne County Road and that number's 1-888-762-3273. And that's to report any pothole that you see. They are patching and some of the ones that were there before, they're gone now, so be sure to keep those calls coming in. Also, we know that there is an agreement with the county exec and Mr. Dan Gilbert relative to the jail. We also know that that agreement has gone to the commission, but it's currently in the legal department and will be to those commissioners probably at any time. They, too, will have to review those contracts and make approval or whatever their situation will be relative to that agreement. I think you all are aware of the fact that the land swamp relative to the jail, which was between the City of Detroit and Wayne County, has been approved already by the commission. It was approved last week by the full board committee. So, it's on its way, the jail is on its way and we should have information at any time. And of course, Commissioner Anderson will keep you informed as to what is happening relative to the jail. If there's anyone that's interested in having a hepatitis vaccination, you can call 734-727-7101. There's a problem with hepatitis A in Michigan at this time, so if anybody's interested in a vaccination, you can contact the Wayne County Health Department to receive that vaccination. You would certainly have to schedule. Also, if you're interested in hazardous waste collection, you have something that you want to dispose of, on Saturday, June the 9th, from 8 until 12:00 PM, at the Henry Ford College at 5101 Evergreen Road in Dearborn and that's south of Ford Road, you can go and take your hazardous waste to be disposed of. And of course, we know hazardous waste would include paint, floor wax, carpet cleaners, furniture polish, all those things that sometimes we wanna throw in our regular trash, but it is considered hazardous. And again, that's at the Henry Ford College on Evergreen, Saturday, June 9th. And that's all that I have. If anyone has anything that you'd like for me to take back to the commissioner, I would be more than happy to do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Craig?
Craig?
Hello, and good evening, council, mayor, residents. I'm coming before you to provide some information for opportunities, and it's opportunities for our residents, and it's opportunities for everybody in the area that wants to make a difference, a difference to how the city is ran, what the image and vision of the city is going to be in the future. And it all has to do with getting involved. We've made some changes to our, to our website, we're really focusing on how we can get residents involved with the city, and it starts with this. The Get Involved opportunity is for boards and commissions, there's been a lot of talk about letting people know what's available for open boards and commissions vacancies, and this is a great, easy way for people to get involved with those boards and commissions. So, when you go to the homepage of the website, there is a button that's called Get Involved, Boards and Commissions, and that will take you to why you should get involved with the boards. And underneath that, we made it very streamlined compared to how the old website was, the old website was very clunky, this is much more modern, much more to the point. The first thing that you see is this big button right here that says Board and Commission Information, and then you can apply online, and you can download a actual fillable form, if you like, and you can provide that to the city if you don't want to fill out the application online directly. The boards and commissions information has been, instead of it being all spread out across this side navigation bar, it's now designed as more of a FAQ, Frequently Asked Questions. So, when you click on one of these boards, it tells you exactly what the board is about, how many members are on the board, information about how to get on the board, and the, any vacancies, the members of the board, and when the term expires. So, all the information you need to be part of a board is listed right there. So, say for example, you want to be part of the Beification Committee, which is a lovely committee, it's all about making the city look better for the residents, of course. You can go online and fill out this form here, it's a very simple form, you can fill it out from any computer, mobile device, iPad, phone, you name it, you can fill it out. That information is, as soon as you hit submit at the bottom, it goes directly to the mayor's office for review, it's as simple as that. If you do not have access to a computer, or for example, you have limited access and you don't want to submit online, you can do a printable form, which you can print this, you can fill it out on your computer if you like, and then print it, and then you can provide it to the mayor's office. The address is at the bottom, you can mail it, or you can drop it off, very easy way. And the best part is, these applications, the printable ones, there are a number of them printed already, they're available at City Hall, the Senior Friendship Center, Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center, and the library. So, you can stop by any of those locations, they're going to be in the kiosk right up front, and you can grab an application, or my personal favorite, go online and fill it out. But we're here to try to help out. Thank you.
Thanks, Craig. We'll move on to citizens' questions or input on the agenda. Citizens will be recognized before the business of the meeting commences to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Citizens are asked to limit their questions or input to three minutes. Is there anyone on my left?
Good evening, City Council, I'm Kevin Coleman, former Westland Councilman. I wanted to thank the mayor, the city council, and the Bernstein Law Firm for moving ahead with this class, class action lawsuit against the manufacturers and distributors of opioids. I feel very strongly that, that we need to go after them with all we got. We know a lot of lives have been claimed by this epidemic, and I want to thank the council for moving ahead with this tonight. Hopefully, it'll save some lives.
Anyone on my right? Mr. Graham?
Richard Graham from Westland, also with Move Westland Forward. On the vouchers, and specifically page four under Personnel, Personnel Department, Michael Landau, for an expense of $218.79, it says just reimbursement. Almost everything you see here, if not everything, has some sort of description, like training, conference reimbursement, renewal, his just says reimbursement. So, what was that for? Secondly, on page six of the vouchers under ordinance, under Neighborhood Services, I see the name of Michael Care, listed for $980 under Neighborhood Services. Question, is this the same Michael Care that used to be a former councilman? And I guess if so, why is he back onto payroll after he's been voted out of office? Thank you.
Anyone on my left? Mr. Warren?
This is also regard to, under Old Business Item Four, the opioid thing. Is there a printout of what our actual claims are in regards to the manufacturers, so that we could have a view of what we're claiming to sue them for? That's, that's my question.
Okay. Anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments on the agenda and move on to the consent calendars, is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Sir, any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Minutes of the regular meeting held April 2, 2018. Minutes of study session held April 2, 2018. Minutes of study session held April 7, 2018 at 9:00 AM. Request from Art Van Furniture, 8300 North Wayne Road, to conduct two tent sales on their property, with the first sale May 1 through May 16, 2018, and a second sale July 24 through August 15, 2018. The last item on the consent calendar, adoption of ordinance 248885, and ordinance to amend ordinance 248 to show CB3 district classification, where CB1 is now shown in the area situated in the city of Westland described as parcels numbers 028, 02, 0021, 000 through 004, and 006. This is the northeast corner of Ford Road and Morley Avenue, planning department number 2206, and this item was introduced April 2, 2018. Moving to Old Business, item one, approval of proposed rezoning from GAR, Garden Apartment Residence, to CB1, Low Intensity Commercial Business, parcel number 007010599307, north side of Warren, west of Merriman, planning department number 2203. The Planning Commission recommends approval, and if approved, further directs the city attorney to draft the necessary ordinance amendment. This item was postponed by city council, March 19, 2018.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hammond, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. I don't really have anything further other than what you really already know, that the item was postponed so that the petitioners may provide updated letters of commitment for the property, for the proposed building. Those letters of commitment have been provided to the council, therefore, approval is recommended, sir.
Thank you. Is the petitioner present?
Yes. Paul Lubianski for John Del Fonsi, the petitioner. Last month, I believe we came to consensus, except for the two items of the updated commitment letters and the sidewalk issue. The sidewalk is shown on there, we just couldn't see it because of the color drawing, and we've provided the new updated commitment, commitment letters.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the council? Any discussion? Any discussion? Oh, Councilwoman Green?
Yes, I just wanted to state that I appreciate you going back to get the letters of intent from the potential occupants, and I had a chance to speak to both of the brokers that you submitted the letters from, and I am confident that, you know, we do have some viable candidates coming in once that property is under construction, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New Business, item two, minutes of study session held April 7, 2018 at 12:00 PM.
Motion by Councilman Landau, supported by Councilman Hart. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Thank you.
Councilman Landau?
Yes.
President Godbout?
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business, item three, public hearing to review the Community Development Block Grant Annual Consolidation Action Plan, Year 44, Community Development Block Grant and Home Program budgets for the fiscal period July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019.
Joanne, this is a public hearing, any citizen may speak once at a public hearing for up to three minutes. Joanne, if you'd like to give a brief overview?
Yes, thank you through the council president. The city of Westland receives Community Development Block Grant and Home Program funds from the federal government through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. One of the requirements of receiving these funding, this funding is for the city to hold public hearings, excuse me, regarding the use of the funds. The first public hearing was held last week, last month, with the Community Development Citizen Advisory Committee, and tonight constitutes a second required public hearing. The city's proposed budget for Community Development Block Grant Funds is $1,013,354, and that's made of $993,354 as the anticipated grant from HUD, and $20,000 in program income. On the home program budget, it's anticipated to be $444,799, comprised of $244,799 in grant funds, and $200,000 in program funds, program income, I'm sorry, and then $25,000 in reprogram funds. These funds must be spent either in CDBG eligible areas, as determined by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, or they can be spent for programs that benefit individuals, such as the city's Home Buyer Assistance Program, or Homeowner Rehabilitation Program. The folks that participate in those programs can live anywhere in the city, they must qualify based on their income.
Thanks. Again, this is a public hearing on the, on the program. Is there anyone on my right? Yes.
I'm just kind of curious, how many people do you think will be helped with this grant? And is it, how long will the, will it take to spend all the money? So, if I can get those questions answered, I'd be appreciative. This is Jody White from Westland. Thank you.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone else in the audience? Joanne, did you have a quick response on that?
Yes, thank you. Regarding the number of beneficiaries, I can provide that exact number from last year's program accomplishments, but it is in the thousands for the city. The funding is spent in the Norway subdivision, the senior center, homeless shelters, benefits many individuals, as I mentioned, through the Home Buyer Program, the Homeowner Rehabilitation Program, so I can provide the exact numbers if you contact me via email or by calling. And the timing of the funding is during the city's fiscal year, so for this particular grant, it will be July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019.
Is there anyone else in the audience on the public hearing? Motion, is there a motion?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman Landau. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New Business, item four, approval of request to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the appropriate engagement paperwork to advance the city's class action claims against manufacturers and distributors of opioids. The mayor and city attorney recommend engaging the Sam Bernstein Law Firm to advance the city's claim. There is no out-of-pocket cost to the city, and the contingency fee is 30%.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Mayor? I'm sorry, Mr. Fasson, you want to, whoever wants to take it first?
Thank you, City Council.
Thank you. Tonight, we had a study session before the city council, where we talked to the city council about retaining the Sam Bernstein Law Firm, and Mr. Bernstein, Mark Bernstein's in the audience here tonight that can answer questions on this, but this is something the city of Westland's been taking a look at for a while, and I know that a lot of other municipalities have already started to join the mass, it's a mass action lawsuit, and we can explain that if we need to, but it's something the city of Westland's been taking a look at, it is, it's an issue that affects all of us, so, actually, we have a resident that's in the audience tonight, Mr. David Foster, who, well, he's a Westland resident, he lost his daughter, 23-year-old daughter, to opioids, so it's something that happens in every city, and Mayor Walker from Garden City, I appreciate your leadership and stepping up for your community of Garden City to, to take a lead on this as well, so. With that, I think there was a question, perhaps Attorney Fasson can answer that?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the, the mass action litigation will seek reimbursement for taxpayer money spent on opioid-related responsibilities, including law enforcement costs, such as Narcan doses, incarceration, prosecutorial expenses, lab costs, drug courts, et cetera, and community health costs, EMT, other services, substance abuse programs. The lawsuit, as explained during the study session, will also have an injunctive relief component to seek to change the defendant's conduct, being to stop diversion, misuse, and problematic distribution of these opioids.
Any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New Business, item five, approval of collective, collective bargaining agreement between the city of Westland and the Westland Police Officers Association. The term of the agreement is July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2019.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Do we need to do a roll call on this? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote on this one.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Landau?
Yes.
President Godbout?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Before we, we continue, I'd like to recognize the members of the executive board of the Police Officers Association who are sitting in the, in the back of the room. Thank you, guys.
New Business, item six, approval of revised site plan for proposed exterior facelift for the Gargero Company retail building, 8035 North Middlebelt Road, west side of Middlebelt, north of Van Arbor Trail, planning department number 709 revised. Planning Commission recommends approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman Landau. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, sir. This is the property in question, as the clerk had indicated, it's on the west side of Middlebelt, north of the trail. We're certainly happy to see another reinvestment in the north end of our community, that's something we've been working really hard at, trying to spur development, redevelopment in this area, and, and these gentlemen are doing just that. This is the building as it sits right now, so basically a before and after, this is what the building in, in general will look like when it's done, it's It's a new cultured stone exterior, along with new parapets with composite siding, new glass windows, new glass doors, a total exterior upgrade to that existing building. All affected departments have reviewed this request, sir, and expressed no objection. Therefore, approval is recommended.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is the petitioner present?
Yes, my name is John Gargero, Gargero Construction Company, Livonia, Michigan.
Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, you said it perfectly, and that's exactly what we're going to do.
Great. Any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks for investing, reinvesting in the property.
New business, item seven. Adoption of resolution to amend the interlocal agreement that created the Nakan Transit Commission to include the charter township of Canton.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, is there support? Support by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item eight. Approval of voucher.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Hersberg, is there support? Support by Councilman Hart. There was a question, Mr. Smith, on the vouchers?
Yes, through the chair to Mr. Graham. With regards to the reimbursement for the seminar, when I get back in the office tomorrow morning, I'll look it up and see exactly which seminar or conference that was for, and let them know, and let council know as well.
Okay. Then, in regards to the ordinance department?
Yeah, through the chair, the question on, on the ordinance that was showing up, whether Mike here was the same Mike here that was on city council? Yes, it is. I know that Hassan Saab, when he interviewed Mike here for the Neighborhood Services position, at first, it's a contracted employee through Neighborhood Services. And what better ambassador to have for the residents and for, for the city, to have someone that's been in the city for 20-plus years, serving as a city councilperson that knows what the issues are, what the ordinances are, and what the complaints are that he's seen in his 20-plus years. So, we couldn't find a better ambassador than, than Mike here, so, thanks.
Any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to citizens' comments or requests. Citizens will be recognized at the end of the meeting immediately following the agenda item, approval of vouchers. Citizens are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. All citizens wishing to speak will be heard. Is there anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Anyone in the audience? Mr. Graham.
Richard Graham, Westland, also with Move Westland Forward. Council President Godbout, and also through the chair to the mayor. The 2018 ICSC Real Estate Convention is coming up on Sunday, May 20 through the 23rd. I asked this about a month ago, and it was, it was not decided yet who is going, which was a shame, because now all the early bird savings are gone, which is frankly shocking. Last year, Move Westland Forward revealed a distrop trip cost taxpayers $10,000 for four people to go, and included stays at the high-end luxury hotel Bellagio in area. For 2018, who is going on this trip from the city of Westland? Are any guests or significant others going? What hotel and what nightly rate will taxpayers pay this year? What are the goals and agenda for this trip? Will a report be generated after this trip is shared, after the trip and shared with the public of the successes, failures, and improvements for next year? Where are the previous reports? Mayor Wild, we heard today about, about commissions, about commissions and boards. Are applications being accepted for the ethics board? There seems to be changes to the city's website, which we saw today. So, a question is, is that an open, are those open for people to put in, for the ethics board to be formed? Move Westland Forward was made aware of an issue regarding some dogs at a house that was being rented on, on Friday of last week. It is very troubling that on Fridays, we do not have any animal control officers, since Mayor Wild took this union job away and hired part-time work. That, I talked to the Neighborhood Services Group on that Friday, and they seem to only work Monday through Thursday, 8 to 4. That's a very small, limited time that our animal control is working. They're great workers, I'm sure, we heard about that today. However, why aren't they working on a Friday? And why is it just limited hours? And this came from Neighborhood Services. Even the police department initially could, could or would not get involved. Eventually, the mayor's office was pressured to take action, and social media became too much to bear. Regarding the recent emergency, the weather emergency, it is interesting that Livonia, Canton, and Wayne opened up various shelters for their residents. However, yesterday, the key people for our, for our safety, Mayor Wild, Chief, Chief Stratner, and also Deputy Mayor Reddy seemed to be downtown when there was an emergency going on, campaigning, by the way, when there was an emergency going on in the city. Why is our surrounding communities actively helping their citizens, but our city, of the 10th largest, doesn't seem to be doing that? Lastly, Ambassador of the city, that is an amazing comment when he was elected out of office. He called residents' names sitting up there. He also said that there isn't any type of rat problem, and had issues with ordinance for noise. Amazing comment. We'll publish more about that. Thank you.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments and move on to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, council president. Thank you, council, tonight for moving forward on a couple items I'd like to recognize. First of all, was the approval of the proposed rezoning for the gentleman that owned the property on Warren Road. I applaud council for your diligence on this. I think at the end of the day, we ended up with a project that the city council, but I think the entire city will be proud of. And I know at the end of the day, the, the property owner is happy to finally redevelop his property. So, thank you for your diligence on that, and thank you for moving forward on that tonight. It was also nice to see the, the property on North Middle Belt Road, going to get the facelift. We've seen a lot of improvements to retail properties on both Ford Road and Warren Road, and one of the things that we've been working hard to do is try to bring some of those reinvestment dollars to the north end of Westland. So, this is actually one of our older retail centers in the city. So, I think that this reinvestment is going to do very well. Also, thank you, council, for moving forward with joining the mass action lawsuit on opioids. This is just the very beginning. This is something that's going to be going on for a while, and we had a chance to talk with several of the, the attorneys that are signing up for people for this, this lawsuit. And I think that we found the right fit with the Bernstein Law Firm. So, we feel comfortable with them, and council, that, like I said, this is just the very beginning. We're actually going to be bringing Mr. Bernstein and his group back to talk more about this in the future. And I'm actually going to be starting a task force, and resident David Foster, who I had mentioned earlier tonight, has agreed to sit on that. So, that's something I'll be working with the police chief and the fire chief to, to flesh out here in the, in the very near future. I'd like to just remind everybody, this is the time of year that I do my summer jobs program for our area youth. This will be the eighth year. Right now, we're reaching out to Westland businesses to partner with us. This is, a goal of ours is to introduce our youth to the workforce, and more and more, it's becoming a very competitive workforce, and it's, it's really, really hard for, for our youth to break into that. So, this will be our eighth annual Wildabout Youth Work Summer Job Program. It's geared towards area youth 16 to 18, and it kicks off on Thursday, May 11, at 2:00 p.m. And it's going to be members of the city's administration, or our professionals, are going to go into both John Glenn and Wayne Memorial to meet with students that are interested. We're going to work with them on how to prepare for the interviews, because there's going to be a job fair here at city hall. We're going to work with them on how to dress for success, how to handle the application interview skills. We're also, part of the program is teaching them financial literacy, which is a partnership with Fifth Third Bank. And we're also going to try to work with the school district to make the work permit assistance as smooth as possible. So, this is open to any resident, any youth in the city of Westland, age 16 to 18, or any youth that is, that goes to one of Westland's school districts. So, whether it be Livonia Public Schools, or Wayne Westland, or any of the other school districts in the city of Westland, this is open to these youth and your children. So, after we go to John Glenn and Wayne Memorial on May 11, we'll be back here at city hall on May 14, where we're going to have all the different businesses in town come in and actually do the interviews. And we have a lot of great jobs. Every year, we have, unfortunately, it seems like we end up with more jobs than kids sometimes. So, definitely, if you have a youth that's age 16 to 18, you're going to want them to be here. If they miss the, the visit at John Glenn and Wayne Memorial, you can still come. Everybody that comes at night's going to have a chance to win a free iPad from Fifth Third Bank, and if you attend the sessions at John Glenn and Wayne Memorial, you'll actually have a double chance, you'll get two tickets, a chance to do that. So, anybody that's interested in participating may contact the mayor's office or Charles House, our new economic development director, for more information, or you can always go to thecityofwestland.com to learn more. The deadline to apply to participate is Wednesday, May 10, so there's still time. Council, tonight, the sharp-looking guy that was up showing us the boards and commissions is our interim IT director, Craig Brown, who's doing a great job for us. Craig worked with us to bring the process of recruiting people to serve in our boards and commissions a little bit more easier. So, he demonstrated that tonight. So, if you're interested in serving on, on a board or commission, I've actually added a couple committees on there, too. We're going to have to put the task force we talked about tonight for opioids on there, too. But take a look at it. It shows all of our boards and commissions. It has a little brief description about all of them, what the requirements are, and it also shows the boards that have vacancies. So, applications can be submitted electronically, or paper applications can be printed off, or you can contact the mayor's office if you have any issues with that or problems with that. This took me a little bit longer to get online than I wanted to, because we, we took a little extra time to make sure that this was a, a system that was seamless, and very informative, and easy for residents to learn about. So, I want to thank a few people. Shannon in my office, she worked on this very diligently. Mr. Craig Brown for getting it online for us. Like to thank the clerk, Richard LeBlanc, for helping us rewrite a lot of the, the information. Like to help, thank President Godbout for working with us on this to, to look at all these boards and commissions, and also created a couple new committees. And of course, Jim Fasson in the legal department, they had a big hand in it as well, too. So, check it out, kick the tires, let us know what you think. There are a lot of opportunities out there right now, and it also gives you an idea when those, when those seats may come open in the future. Then, just to wrap up really quick, the city of Westland's annual Earth Day celebration's going to be taking place on Friday, April 20, at 1:00 p.m. at Wildwood Elementary School. This year's event's also going to let us kick off our 2018 tree planting program. As we're going to be planting a tree, we're going to have the students at Wildwood Elementary help us plant the tree to kick it off. And we'll also be presenting equal awards to various organizations and individuals around town that have showed their equal friendliness over the last year, so we'll leave it at that. And then, council, I received word today from retired veteran Bill Acton's family that we should be keeping Mr. Acton in our thoughts and prayers. You remember Bill Acton? He's the post commander of American Legion, post 251, so he is in need of our prayers right now. So, so kind of keep him in your, in your thoughts and prayers. And also, I'd like to welcome Ms. Sherri West back to the library, as I mentioned at the last council meeting. She lost her husband, and she's been doing an incredible job of keeping the library working for us as our interim director. And she reports that the library board has been working their way through the process of identifying a new director, and it looks like they have done so. And at their meeting on Wednesday this week, they will be, I think, officially offering employment to that individual. So, if you have a chance to see Ms. West, you may want to applaud her for her work. She's really gone, she's really gone above and beyond to keep our library going while we were looking for a new director. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. Hank from the city attorney's office. We'll begin council comments with Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. I'd like to start by thanking Anila Anderson for leading the pledge tonight. Also, would like to congratulate, once again, Camree Clegg and the Wayne Memorial High School Girls Basketball Team on doing a really good job, as well as congratulations, once again, to the distinguished young women of Westland and Wayne. I had the opportunity to attend their performance that they had, I believe, last month, and they did an awesome job. So, once again, congratulations. Yesterday, or I guess this weekend, I had a chance to attend the Democratic Women's Luncheon at Kobo Hall, as well as the Michigan Democratic Convention that took place yesterday. And so, I'd like to say congratulations to the people who received endorsement yesterday. It was an extremely long day, but we got through it, and congratulations to the people that we will see on the ballot. Just wanted to remind the public that we will be resuming our budget study sessions. We canceled this past Saturday, so we're going to be resuming our budget study sessions on the next couple of Saturdays, April 21 and April 28, here at the city hall, and we'll be doing that from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And finally, I'd like to congratulate the two new police officers that were sworn in tonight, just prior to our study session, as well as the officer that was recognized and who will be training soon to come aboard our police department. So, thank you, and have a good night.
Councilman Hammond.
Thank you. I, too, would like to congratulate all the distinguished young women of Wayne Westland. As you saw tonight, we have a extremely talented pool of young youth in this community, and it's just outstanding to have them here between Wayne and Westland. And congratulations to all of them. It was nice to have them out today. I also wanted to touch on a couple of the agenda items. I, too, want to say that it was nice to see that the reinvestment of the building there at Middle Belt and Ann Arbor Trail, it's great to see a property owner having confidence in the city, and standing behind us, and also looking to reinvest and, and try to work on that corner. It definitely needs a shot in the arm up there. We have had some redevelopment up there, but hopefully, this will spur some more in that area. And I also wanted to just touch on the agenda item of us extending, expanding into Canton with naked transit. I know a lot of our residents use much of the, the medical facilities in that area, so it's going to help them to be able to seek further care and see their doctors through naked transit. So, I thought that was, that was nice to see us go ahead and, and move forward with that tonight. And as well as with the mass action suit, I'm glad the city has taken a stance on that and, and getting involved. Hopefully, other cities in the, the state of Michigan will get involved, and hopefully, we can have a positive impact on curbing the opioid crisis that's going on. And that's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Hart.
Thank you. So, like Councilwoman Green said today, it was amazing before the council meeting. We got to see the whole evolution of our police department. We got to see Sergeant Paul White go ahead and retire. Then, we saw Officer Brassfield be promoted to sergeant. Then, we swore in new Officer Kumisha, and then we had one PSA in the wings, ready to become an officer and working towards it. So, we got to see the entire police department evolution here happen in one day in the city of Westland, and it was pretty neat for me to see that. A lot of positive things happened today. We saw the distinguished young women of Wayne Westland come out here and demonstrate all of the things that they've been done and why they should be recognized. The young woman, Camree Clay, 4.5 GPA, are you kidding me? That's insane. That's wonderful. And she's also state-ranked, a basketball player. She's leading by example. Then, we saw Casey Joyce, a citizen who wrote about our officer, animal control officer, and the positive things we were doing there. Getting somewhere with this. Dr. King said darkness cannot drive out darkness. Okay? Only light can do that. And I believe that negativity cannot drive out negativity. Only positivity can do that. It's important that we all maintain a high level of positivity, positivity, and all of us working together. The call went out today for boards and commissions. That's an opportunity for everybody, all of our active citizens, to become a part of a positive forward momentum. I encourage you all to go ahead and do that. It's easy to be negative. Negative is a tool of an easy person's way. Positivity is where the real work happens. Let's all team together and do the work. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
Thank you. I, too, would like to congratulate Officer, Sergeant White on his retirement tonight. With that retirement, we were able to promote Sergeant Brassfield and With that retirement, we were able to promote Sergeant Brassfield and new Officer Kamisha. Also, would like to congratulate the city union and the mayor and the administration for reaching an agreement on police officers' contract. I know you guys have been at it for quite some time now, and I think closure to both parties is probably good. Looking forward to see some closure to the fire department contract. I know there's been some talks going on with that. Looking forward just to seeing you guys get wrapped up over there, too. Hope it happens soon. Thanks.
Councilman Londo?
Thank you, President Godbout. I wanna start off, answer the question from the resident tonight. That was the Michigan Municipal League Elected Officials Academy Weekender Event that I attended, along with my colleagues, Councilwoman Green, Councilman Hart, and Council President Pro Tem Hersberg. I also wanna welcome the new Westland Police Officer, Michael Kamisha, to the city of Westland. And I'd like to congratulate Sergeant Jason Brassfield on his well-deserved promotion. And also, wanna wish Officer Paul White well in his retirement. I'm jealous. And thank you for your dedicated service to the city of Westland and for your service in the Army as well. Enjoy your retirement. I also wanna thank the Westland Police Officers Association Union and our city administration staff for all their hard work in the recent contract negotiations. Like Councilman Johnson said, they're never easy, and they've seen the drag on. But I think there was agreement made on where all sides seem to be satisfied. So, I appreciate your guys' efforts in that. And what this new contract does, it makes our police department more competitive with attracting future applicants to our department, and just helps us in that regard. I also wanna applaud the administration moving forward, the Canton Township getting them back on board with Nankin Transit, which, again, allows us residents access to an additional 36 square miles of amenities, including medical offices, shopping and dining, and other entertainment options. And I also wanna thank Attorney Mark Bernstein, who was in the audience tonight. Thank you for you and your team for the work on the National Prescription Opiate Mass Action Lawsuit, and for spending some time in a study session and explaining this in further detail. I'm really happy that the city of Westland's taking part in this litigation to attempt to recoup some taxpayer dollars that were spent on opioid-related responsibilities. It's no secret, the opioid epidemic is not just a Michigan problem. It's a public health crisis that's affecting us nationally as well. I wanna take a moment to recognize Councilwoman Green on her recent award by the National Association of Women in Construction. I know I told you earlier, but I'd like to say publicly as well. And again, I'll echo the comments. It was great to see all the young women up here today, and our animal control officer. I know I've given you plenty of calls that I've taken for all the hard work you do. So, I appreciate all the young women in our community, and that's it. I'll leave it at that.
Councilman Hersberg?
Thank you, Council President. At the beginning of the meeting, it was mentioned again, the county commission's getting ready to vote on the jail deal. I just wanna say, hey, Commissioner Anderson, Al Hades, please don't delay this anymore. Vote, let's wrap this up. It's costing the taxpayers a fortune, and we are all watching. The boards and commissions are up on the website. I won't go through all that again. But to Mr. Graham's question, yes, the Ethics Board is up there and taking applications. And then, I wanna thank the DPS crews for doing some storm cleanup. I saw them clearing the roads. A lot of branches had fallen and were blocking the streets. I know they were putting in a lot of hours over the weekend, so thank you to them. And congratulations to Officer Michael Kamisha. He's the new hire we got here. And then, congratulations to the newly appointed Sergeant, Jason Brassfield. That's a big step. Thanks.
I'd like to start this evening by thanking Anila Anderson, the second-grade student from Roosevelt McGrath Elementary, for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I, too, would like to congratulate the distinguished young women, winners and participants. You know, they put in a lot of time, a lot of effort, and they put on a great program every year and deserve the accolades and the scholarships that they work so hard for. Again, to, congratulations to Camree Clegg for her academic and athletic accomplishments. She's an outstanding individual and has done a tremendous job, both academically and athletically. And I'm sure she'll continue that when she moves on to Clemson in the fall. I'd like to thank Bren for her work in our Animal Control Division. You know, she goes out and does an outstanding job, day in, day out, takes, you know, the care of the animals, and it's truly a passion for her. She does a great job, and her getting the Compassionate City Award is very well deserved. Again, thanks. Couple other things. The next three weekends, the Inspire Theater is presenting Neil Simon's "Laughter on the 23rd Floor." The shows are Friday and Saturdays at 7:30 p.m. and Sundays at 3:00 p.m. Tickets are $16. And for more info, you can call 734-751-7057. Next weekend, the Mike Madonna Figure Skating Program is presenting the 2018 Ice Show under the City Lights. The Friday show is at 7:00 p.m. The Saturday show is at 6:30 p.m. And the Sunday show is at 2:30 p.m. Advanced tickets are $7 for adults, $6 for senior, and children 3 and under are free. Tickets at the door are $10 for adults, $9 for seniors. And tickets are available at the ice arena. Or for more info, you can call 734-729-4560. And there were a lot of people up here this evening between the distinguished young women and Camree, you know, getting recognition. And we're gonna try at the next council meeting to get the Norwayne Boxing Gym members to come to the next council meeting. And I'd like to congratulate Erskine Wade and the four boxers from the Norwayne Boxing Gym, who are now proud to call themselves Golden Gloves Champions after this weekend's competition. What's most impressive is that the Norwayne Boxing Gym only entered four boxers into the tournament. So, the fact that they all won makes it even more extraordinary. So, I'd like to congratulate Damonte Money Scott, Michael Mikey Turner, Ryan Reed, and Carlos Barden, our four Golden Gloves Champions. And just real quick, in response to Mr. Graham, we did take advantage of the early bird registration for the ICSC convention. I will be attending, as well as the Economic Development Director, Charles House, on behalf of the city. And then, finally, I'd like to wish a happy 29th birthday for the, I don't know how many times, to Councilman Bill Johnson, who's... What?
39.
39? Oh, okay. So, Bill, happy birthday. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?